Pledge leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone. This is the city council meeting for Tuesday, September 2nd.
Okay, Scotty Moore.
Here.
Zach Bryan.
Here.
Andrew Kerr.
Eric.
Bob Clemens.
Here.
Forrest Army.
Here.
Joe Sanders.
Here.
And Chad Jeffries.
Here.
My president.
First on the agenda, the approval of the previous meeting, regulatory executive executive, which was held on August 4th, and our special council meeting to introduce the budget which was held on August 2nd. Second, any further discussion on the motion?
I have an aye.
I have the reading of agenda, addition of new items, which we do not have anything to add. Moving down from the petitions, some public statements, nothing on your old business tonight, your new business. You do have a total of 11 items. Three actions, the first six listed on the agenda are petition related to annexation. Those as part of the resolution we considered will have public hearings. So if you can speak on each individual annexation as they come up, we'll call some public hearings as part of that agenda item. Then you can come speak on any of that. Seven is a proposed change in our existing ordinance. Nine is a resolution for request of our treasurer's office. And nine, 10, and 11 are related to the first readings, my proposed 2026 budget for tonight. We now have the approval of claims and SRF distribution. I repeat the claims and SRF for this period of the all. Move the claims with a second. Second, any further discussion? Are you now all of your signature with an aye?
Aye.
Approve. I think our presentations, petition for maximum public statements. So this is part of the meeting. You can come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. If you do have a comment related to the proposed annexations, we ask that you wait until that comes up on the agenda item. It's outside that scope. Carol.
Evening. Carol Drazga, 390 Ellendale Parkway, Crown Point. Just wondering if we have a date for the opening of the Veterans Parkway. Back in the day, we did the statue of the sailor and the nurse, and we had the stanchions of all the veterans living and passed. And then we're going to put them along that walkway. So I'm just curious if we've got an end game to that project. It's been going on for a while. My second one is, is, and I'm not totally informed, but I'm very concerned on the Lutheran church. There is an engineering study that's showing that it's sound. We can present that, I'm thinking in October. I know it's been to the Board of Works. This is kind of a plea because I think, you know, what would we be without the courthouse? We've got the nurses building, we've got the sheriff house. You know, it's history, it's historic. I just don't think it should be torn down. It's been standing since 1886. And I get the feeling that there's a rush to judgment, to condemn it, to level it. And I know they've had interested parties, but I, I would like to see the city somehow back it, get behind it, and see what we can do to save it as far as, you know, supporting people looking at it. But the concern is to me is it's a piece of history. It's been on the corner since 1886. It's not doing any harm. It's buttoned up. It's structurally sound. I've seen the engineering reports. Zach is on the foundation if he wants to add anything. But the group working on it is getting a strong push from the city to condemn it, to level it. And I think the neighborhood doesn't want it leveled. I don't think they want modular homes in place of it. And I just have a strong feeling for history of this town. And I think we as a city, as a council, should do everything we can to save it. If a year, six months from now, it can't be saved, that's different. But I just don't feel the city or the council has been aware or has gotten behind it. But I think it's just too valuable of a historical building to just be leveled overnight. So anyway, have a good night. Thank you.
Just Carol, with respect to the memorial trail.
Yeah, yeah.
We're near, we're at the goal line.
Okay, good.
Just buttoning up some few issues, but once it's ready to be opened, of course, we're going to have a nice room and cutting.
Okay, good. Just was driving by it and a couple of people, they asked about it. I said, you know what? Yeah, a lot of calls. Okay, thanks.
Carol was saying, sure, just about around, like she said, since around the time of the Civil War, there's not a whole lot of sort of buildings like that that are remaining that need to be restored like that one. It's a very valuable piece of Crown Point culture, Crown Point's history. It's, it's got pretty much a little bit of everything. It's got architectural detailing that is unique. It's, it's structure that, you know, is essentially one of a kind. And as, as speaking, speaking as, you know, I guess, as a board member, it's tough to find buyers for property, to rehab it, to, to do some sort of adaptive reuse where there's the constant threat of it being removed. So it's, that's the struggle as, that the board sees is the constant threat of it being torn down. You know, it's harder for the market profit like some subs.
Okay, anyone else under the public?
Sam, good evening. Sam, Kaiser 225 East 113th Avenue. I want to address an issue from the last city council meeting. I spoke about the lawsuit with Winfield and Indiana I U R C, the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. Only to have my comments dismissed by you, Pete, in attempt to discredit my comment. You clarified to the public that we were not in a lawsuit. While you are technically correct, we are, we are in a legal dispute, not one, but two, which is costing the residents thousands and thousands of dollars in legal fees. So Pete, whatever you choose to call it, a lawsuit, litigation, legal dispute, or something else, we're not going to split hairs about this. There are legal, legal, legal matters that will ultimately result in a legal binding decision that we will have to follow. I have a real issue as to the way that this has been downplayed, and it's misleading. We deserve transparency. Again, I want, I want you to quit gaslighting the residents about our city, what our city is facing. This legal dispute, or whatever you want to call it, would not have happened if you weren't approached by a developer, or the city wasn't developed, approached by a developer to build 4,000 homes, 256 commercial developments. Why would we even consider adding more service territory when our schools are already overcrowded? Our roads can't handle the traffic now. But we all know how this city works. Build it and then react to it or ask for forgiveness. This developer could easily pay for this $200 million plus water treatment plant with his profits. He'll make, you know, 400 million, you know, at my best guess, on the low end, on 4,000 homes. That's not including the property he's going to make when you're talking 256 commercial properties. He could easily pay for two, $300 million for that whole thing instead of putting it on the residents to pay for it. Okay? So basically, in my opinion, Crown Point has been sold out for 44 acre parcel that's in a, a wetland and a flood zone. It's disgraceful.
Thank you, Sam.
Susan McCandry. I live in Crown Point. I have a redacted address.
Let the record reflect Mr. McCandry's address. Wow.
Really? Okay, we'll have a discussion after the meeting. Yeah, we will. And you will, you and I will definitely be having a discussion. Yeah, we will.
Just something else to add to your.
Excuse me. My husband, my husband has a federally redacted address at the courthouse, and you just exposed it here.
Your husband isn't up here with public comment.
Doesn't matter. I live in that home.
That's a public address, and that's for the record.
Okay, you and I are going to go around. I would like my time started over, please. He took my time. No, we're starting over. Before considering what you're going to be discussing this evening on the agenda, I urge all of you to carefully weigh where Crown Point stands currently with wastewater capacity and the construction of the new southeast plant. You know what? I'm going to say something else. I came up in front of this council several months ago because I was concerned about my safety. And I made a comment about it, so I'm going to say it again. If anything happens to my family, my friends, or anyone else involved with the stuff that you are running in a shady background deal with Alex Kupnoffsky, they're going to come to you first. No, I'm done. I'm done with that. But I'm not doing this anymore. You can take out your little personal stuff with me, but I'm done with you. The city still is actively engaged in two Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission cases involving Winfield, neither of which will be resolved possibly before the end of 2025. That uncertainty alone makes the annexation a gamble with our community future. And if you wishing to read about these, should go to IN.gov I U R C docketed cases and search 65035 and 53992. Even if the city prevails, Crown Point will still be committed to servicing LBL's 4,000 additional new homes and 200 commercial sites before a new plant is built, straining not only our wastewater, but also fire police and EMS schools. At the July Plant Commission meeting, Lennar Homes proposed the development of another 439 houses near that 4,000 planned development. Concerns were raised in that meeting about overwhelming our already maxed out system as well as shrinking lot sizes from the city's minimum 80 foot to 50 feet. I believe the deal the city made with Ed Hine and LBL for the new wastewater treatment land of approximately 43 acres for a praise it about $435,000 was a terrible trade to provide access for a developer who stands to make somewhere close to, if not more than $400 million. I urge you all to have discussions with your plant commission counterparts about our expectations for any developments coming out of our standards or coming out of that deal. John Lawton is known for building in density. We really need to maintain our standards when it comes to these developers. I can't believe you all would let Crown Point become known as the community of postage stamped lots and crackerbox houses. A wise person said to me recently, building in Crown Point is a privilege. If the developers don't like our requirements, they can take the next exit down I-65. I agree. Building here is a sought after commodity. John Lawton made a statement in his I U R C testimony, something to the effect of that if he doesn't get Crown Point as his service provider, he would scrap his whole project and not just leave the region, but the whole state of Indiana. We don't need the likes of that in our community. And I say, good riddance. Don't let the door hit him on his way out.
Close that part of the meeting. Go ahead. As I said, we have nothing underholder to purchase tonight. Number one, our new business, the petition for annexation resolution number 2025, that's 0918R, visitation of fiscal plan with 13318 Iowa Street and 13306 Iowa Street. There will also be a public hearing component. Person, is there anybody here representing the petition?
Yes.
Forty.
Yeah, you're going to.
Greg, you're a toss in New York.
Yes, sir, I can.
Hi, good evening.
You're kind of, you're kind of quiet. I don't hear you real well. Same way, Laura? Laurie, you're muted.
Greg, you said you cannot hear us well?
I can, I can somewhat.
We're up on the first agenda item related to the fiscal plan for the.
Yes.
Floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor Ford, to make sure everybody's on the same page, is this the annexation that is labeled number two?
It's a present, not 18R.
And fiscal plan number two?
Yes, that is correct, Greg.
Thank you. Thought I had them in the right order. Okay. So what we've done is put together the fiscal plan for the city of Crown Point. Remember, the reason why you have us put this together is we objectively look at this annexation. This annexation is largely commercial. And basically, on page 19, that is the summary, the five-year summary of the allocated expenses and the annual revenue. This is small in nature, and, and you will see that we go out five years based upon information that is provided by the developer. It is not tainted for the, for the city or for the developer. It's, it's objectively looked at. And at this point in time, given that there is some surplus, we recommend approval of this annexation. And again, smart economic growth is what we've been all about and what this annexation is all about also. It will provide opportunities for employment and will help both water, storm water and wastewater as we move forward. Any questions? I'm not going to go page by page through it, but you see that we address each of the different areas. And keep in mind that this is a fiscal plan that is presented then ultimately to the DLGF for their approval when we go for annexation levy appeals. So I'll pause. If there's any question, I will take them on the first one.
Any immediate questions for?
So does the fiscal plan take into account potential changes with SB1? And then follow up, the net impact appears to be positive from a revenue side, with the exception of year one and two. So the total impact, like dollarization impact, is positive for the annexation? Are there any other extenuating circumstances that, you know, other than SB1 that would cause it to be risky?
Greg, I'm not sure if you heard Councilman Ryan, with respect to the impending SB1 bill and the challenges of what is going to change cities throughout state. What, what is the impact of that bill related to not only this, but a broader sense for Crown Point? What do we have?
Yeah, so, so on behalf of City of Crown Point, and, you know, in the sustainability and building the 2026 budget, we've really taken into account where we stand on Senate Bill One. Keep in mind, the most significant impact for the city of Crown Point will be the introduction of the new LIT. You will be required in, basically, I'm going to say, starting in May, you'll start looking at what LIT you need to implement in the city of Crown Point. And we've already done some of those preliminary calculations. And it will be important for future data to come out of the Indiana Department of Revenue because we've been doing estimates. There is no virtual fence around Crown Point. If you recall, when we even did the wheel tax, we couldn't get all of the people many, many years ago that actually lived in Crown Point versus had a Crown Point address. This will be important for living. Why do I say that? Because when you institute, and every city and town that can, institutes their new LIT rate, the LIT will be imposed on not where you work, but where you live. So as we build the future of Crown Point, we want to look at providing job opportunities, but residential housing is going to be the key to the overall longevity. Now, I agree, you know, it would be nice if they're all million-plus homes and people making, you know, 200-plus income. That would be optimal. That may not be real, but that's going to be anytime we can put good value. And, and the home could be 200,000 if the people earn 200,000. It doesn't matter the value of the home because the value of the actual home will start decreasing over the next five years, going down 6% to 8% as a result of SB1. So the tax rate will be driven up in the future by the sheer fact that AV will be going down in most places. But if we have growth through annexation that is offsetting the decrease, then we ought to have a lot better impact on our tax rate. So it's going to be threading the needle and, and staying on top of this over the next couple of years and making it, again, what I call economic smart growth. But the biggest impact is decreasing AVs in, in you instituting your new LIT. And I tell every one of our cities, towns, counties, libraries, districts, stay tuned for SB2. Now, it won't be, it won't be labeled SB2, but I have dubbed it SB2. And I can guarantee it in my discussions with Ways and Means Chairman, there is going to be changes coming. So, you know, that will be foretelling even in the next legislature and probably the one after that. But we're trying to guide Crown Point very carefully with both the sustainability and Mayor with your inputs that we had on the 26 budget. Because that's really going to establish our flight plan. And so that might have been a long answer, but, you know, we've got a good handle on it. And it's called cautious and carefully moving forward.
Very comprehensive. Thank you. So it's an adoption for a little income tax in May or just a discussion around that time once we get a handle on what? I know this is not necessarily a topic, but just generally speaking, that's our time when it's like discussions with May or adoption.
Or 2027? Yeah, so let's, can't assume anything. SB1 is performance. So yeah, so a lot of discussions. Higher to the end of October, our first project has to be in place, and that's something that has to be done every, so, okay. So, oh, okay. Okay, yeah, sorry.
No, no problem. Thanks, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Weezer. I'm an attorney with offices at 429 West Lincoln Highway in Sherrville. And I represent the petitioners in this particular matter. There's three different petitioners, three separate parcels of property in this first phase. And first of all, in reference to comments by Greg, we worked diligently with him and with the company to provide all the information that he needed in order to come back with a recommendation to you. And I do know that during that discussion with Greg and also in information exchange, he was very cognizant and, and aware of Senate Bill One and the impact that Senate Bill One could have. I agree with him that one way you can counter, depending on how you look at it, the draconian or otherwise aspects of Senate Bill One is to look at annexation and, and smart annexation. I'm not just willy-nilly annexation. This is one that's been in the hopper for some time in terms of our thoughts about it. For purposes of the public, this is property that's located on the east side of I-65, south of the Franciscan Hospital, kind of between 129th, 137th, and kind of bounded by Iowa on the, on the east side. It, this current petition, or these current petitions, there are three, total about 130 acres of land. It's the intent, if these are approved, to follow up with a subsequent annexation. We just didn't have the requisite contingency under the statute to be able to do it all at one time. When that subsequent one comes in, that will probably ultimately be a annexation, if it's approved, of approximately 220 acres. It is going to be used solely and exclusively and going to be hopefully zoned business park, similar to the one that's there that I always forget the name of, the something 65 one that there, that's there, similar that, what's that? Thank you. I know. It's hard to remember that word, point. I can't figure it out. But it's point 65. Similar to that, it's a project that collectively is, and is spearheaded by Mississippi Parkway Partners. That is a client of mine. And they're the ones that have been moving, attempting to move this project along. I agree with Greg that I think it's, the fiscal plan is an excellent fiscal plan. It, it works. It showed that this was a benefit to the community, this particular annexation. It's, it's, as I told you, it will be all business commercial. And that's expected for the whole ultimate 220 acres. So having said all that, I could spend a lot more time talking about Senate Bill One, but I won't. I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody may have about the actual, the actual applications for annexation.
I think this is, this resolution, 6.48, some total size of this particular option.
Of which, well, that's one of the parcels, correct. That's correct. You're, yeah, I understand. I apologize. You're right. That's, that's one parcel.
So, Joe, so yes, proposed buildout is industrial commercial.
Um. Well, we're, we're doing business park. Whatever, whatever items are allowed, whatever developments are allowed in business park, that's what we'll meet. That's the requirement we'll meet.
Page 15 of the fiscal plan, and maybe it's, if someone could explain, table three, page 15, is estimated market value of site plan residential improvement base for the annexation area. Greg?
Yeah, that's.
You know what?
There is no residential component. That, that was just, that's something I, I apologize. I should have seen that when I reviewed the plan.
I just thought, I just wanted, I didn't know if that was a certain definition for.
There, Joe, there was some thought early on about a possible combination of, of business and residential. But the residential component, after a lot of discussion by my clients and myself and others, was taken out and it's exclusively business park.
Yeah. Anybody ever have any questions, further questions right now?
Okay.
So we'll go ahead and open this up for public hearing. So anybody related to any comment about this particular parcel and petition? You can come up to the podium, state your name and address, and share with the council thoughts on this particular. Okay, we'll close the public hearing part and bring it back to the council. Go ahead. I'm in favor of developing. Go ahead. I'm in favor of developing so long the highways along our. Those areas for business and industrial and commercial. We need that. We're gonna need it. Twice the revenue of residential and. We need diversity here in our county. So just as a reminder, counsel, so this particular one, we just adopted the resolution. We have a motion to adopt petition resolution. We have a second, second, second.
Okay, Scotty Ward.
Yes.
Zach Bryan.
Yes.
Andrew Caris.
Yes.
Bob Clemmons.
Yes.
Laura Sarman.
Yes.
Joe Sanders.
Yes.
And Chad.
Yes.
Pass this thing to council. Um, I mean, on number two, ordinance that goes with this, ordinance number two zero two five dash zero nine dash two zero. Ordinance for annexation of one three three one eight Iowa Street and one three three zero six Iowa Street. This is just the first.
I move to read the title only and hold over for second reading. It's twenty twenty five oh nine two oh.
Motion. Who who can a second? Is any further discussion on the motion?
Okay, Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Caris.
Yes.
Clemmons.
Yes.
Sarman.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Jeffries.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Number three, petition for annexation and resolution number two zero two five dash zero nine dash four nine R. Petition for the adoption of fiscal plan one three one one, excuse me, one three one nine east one hundred twenty nine. Row one three east state road eight and one seven one five east one hundred nine seven. We'll also have a public hearing. Uh, Greg Garitas, the financial or sorry, the fiscal plan for this petition.
Yes, sir. I I believe you have in front of you. I'm going to call this, it it's on the front cover. Area one, is that correct, Mayor?
Yeah, this should be number four on your.
On his map, but area one on our fiscal plan.
Yeah, area one, number four.
Yep. Again, we are understanding from the developer and we have published in our report. That all of these will be commercial or industrial in nature, not residential. And you will notice that on our tables. This one has a strong proposed A V uh which is helping it, commercial A V. Which is helping on the five year phase in period. Um, to be very, very strong, even stronger than the first one. Uh, it, once it's built out and it's fully assessed. Remember, sometimes assessed value can be, uh, take two or three years. To get on full, fully assessed and on the tax rolls after it's even built. And so this has a a strong net uh impact to the city. And we have made the recommendation, again, subject to what might occur in in S B two. That we, uh, I keep telling everybody, stay tuned for that development as it occurs. But I believe we um are, we are definitely giving this a high recommendation to move forward. And would be a benefit to the city as a whole.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Do you have any questions for Greg? Jeff, you want to? This one?
Yeah, yeah, just um. I agree with Greg's assessment of of the fiscal plan and and the benefits of this particular one, this this particular annexation, but. Uh, since we've brought all of our all three are being considered tonight, all my comments would be the same.
Okay.
Sure.
Any questions?
Yeah, Jim, I got one question. Why do you think every single one of these say fiscal plan with a Weezer annexation? Just because you prepared it. I, that's why I don't think I've ever seen that.
I don't, what's that on?
On page nineteen, it's on every single one of them, all three of our fiscal plans for each annexation.
I.
It's just like, oh, Weezer annexation.
Probably, I guess, Scott, because I filed it with Greg, submitted it on behalf of my clients and had submitted it with Greg, and that's probably how it got to him.
I didn't think it was a big deal. I just wanted to ask that's all.
I wish it was my annexation, but.
Yeah, so I just thought of that.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so we'll bring this also to the public hearing. So if anybody has a comment about this particular petition and the proposed parcels. Total is about seventy four point nine six.
I know I've told been told before, but it's not a Q and A. I'm hoping that this is a public hearing that I can get, uh, ask a question and hopefully get an answer. Um, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, when uh the city annexes property. And uh, it's taken on, does that come in under residential? And then it has to be rezoned going forward after that?
Yeah, it comes in our one.
Okay, so. Are we going to make a, is there any way to make a um? Uh, to to regulate that it's going to be, you know, because he's saying it's going to be commercial and and that. What's to stop him from changing his mind and 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 want to build another, you know? Subdivision that we, you know? So don't need. Um, and then if you, I've been told before, you know, if you try and stop them, that you'll, you know, you'll have a lawsuit on your hands. So what could we do to to protect the city and the residents that you're taking out, you know, if the Senate, if you take this on? That it's that it's guaranteed it's going to be uh commercial and not more residential.
That's great. This area of the Congress, I'm not a cop, this is residential, so the.
Well, that's all fine and dandy, but we know that I've witnessed stuff go that that alters from the from the plan.
Well, I already stated how I stand with the area, the development, and it wouldn't have a planned commission or. Yeah, I think this is just an extension of the business park in the Francis.
Which I'm I'm totally, I totally agree on. I I I think that's great. I'm I'm concerned with it being flipped in residential because especially parcel three being where it's where it's at. You know, it wouldn't make much sense for the other two, but a partial three bit. So I would, I would hope that you guys put something in. In place that it doesn't become another issue with more homes and subdivisions.
And they, the Franciscan and town of Lake, they they have pretty laid out plan.
Sorry, I would like to ask about the service plan for this under the fiscal plan for annexation. I just kind of want to understand how then, how the city is going to extend services to this area and what our timeline looks like for what we're doing with that. Yes.
All that.
The service plan. It's already in place in that location. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead and close the public hearing part and bring this to the council. Move mayor's present. Oh, nine one nine R. We have a motion to approve. We have a second. A second and a second. Chad. Chad. Any further discussion? And you're, so again, just to clarify, it does say on. Site plan. Estimated market value site plan residential, and it says it in all of them. Should we make our motion or? Section to that language?
You can, I mean, you can accept the fiscal plan. Ask president would recommend to change or have it on scare causes. Relate this position to your satisfaction.
Yeah, I mean, I do put it.
You could, you could, you can accept that fiscal plan with that.
Change of residents, scratch out, resident.
Correct.
So what do you want to amend that?
Yes, the motion uh to approve with the redaction of the residential.
So move. Second. So thank you.
Second. Any further discussion? I mean, yeah, 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 thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
What's the second?
Andrew.
Andrew, okay, so. Chad. Okay, all right, okay, Scotty Ward.
Yes.
Zach Bryan.
Yes.
Andrew Caris.
Yes.
Bob Clemmons.
Yes.
Laura Sarman.
Yes.
Joe Sanders.
Yes.
And Chad Jeffries.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
War, uh, which was an end to end with this ordinance number two zero two five dash zero nine dash two one. For annexation of one three one nine east. One hundred twenty ninth Avenue and two zero one three east state road eight and one seven one five east one hundred. All moves to read title only and hold over for second. Two zero two five dash zero nine dash two one. There's a motion to approve in second. A second. Further discussion on the motion.
Okay, Scott, your votes are.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Caris.
Yes.
Clemmons.
Yes.
Sarman.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
And Jeffries.
Yes.
Uh, number five, petition for annexation and resolution number two zero two five dash zero nine dash two zero R. Petition and for the adoption of this for plant one four one one. One hundred thirty seventh avenue. Six one one six hundred thirty seventh avenue. One three nine five zero Iowa Street. Uh, Greg Garitas, the fiscal plan for this petition.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And for council and public's knowledge, what we do is the, the information that is contained, for instance, on page fifteen. Of the annexation fiscal plan, we have developed from, we're expecting over fifty million of assessed valuation. Coming on one one twenty nine. This is based upon information that we have uh gotten in our um annexation data request. Which we put, have put together and petitioner has uh answered those questions. This is a data request that we use throughout the the state of Indiana in growing areas like Westfield, Avon, some things like that. And so this is uh the information we use. With that, then, we take it through all the different steps uh in the fiscal plan. And basically, again, this one has a positive impact because it's commercial. And uh going to provide in year four quite a bit of uh revenue as it stands. At this point in time, again, subject to any S B two or any changes in that. Um, so at this point in time, like the other two, we are uh, we are recommending approval. And uh, positive bottom line in providing employment opportunities. For the city of Crown Point residents. So at this point, I'll pause. Questions?
Council have any questions about right now fiscal plan? Uh, we'll go ahead and open this one up also for the public hearing. So if you'd like any comment about the petition for this particular annexation, proposal resolution. Go ahead and just read them.
These comments are from Roxy B. She says, there's a residential, there is residential in that area of Iowa and one hundred thirty seventh avenue. What buffers will be placed to keep the residential areas separate? This business park is creating more traffic, lower home values. Why should residents be hit with the annexation for a business park in their backyard? This is forcing residents who did not give in to sell their homes to deal with it and disturb their daily life. Or move and let them make this an entire business park.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing part and. Petition and proposed resolution. So move on. Two oh two five oh nine twenty R. With the.
With that.
Has presented with the redaction of.
Yes.
Presidential. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
And a second. Further discussion.
Okay, Scotty Ward.
Yes.
Zach Bryan.
Yes.
Andrew Caris.
Yes.
Bob Clemmons. Laura Sarman.
Yes.
Joe Sanders.
Yes.
And Chad Jeffries.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Number six, ordinance two zero two five dash zero nine dash two two. This is the ordinance for annexation of one four one one east one hundred thirty seventh avenue, one six one one east one hundred thirty seventh avenue. And one three nine five zero Iowa Street, first read.
I move to read the title only and hold over for second reading, ordinance twenty twenty five oh nine twenty two.
We have a motion. Approve and a second.
Yes.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Okay, Scott, your votes are.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Caris.
Yes.
Clemmons.
Yes.
Yes. Sarman.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
And council president Chad.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Council. Uh, up next, ordinance number two zero two five dash zero nine dash two three. Ordinance amending section five zero point zero five of the fiscal code regarding utility deposits. I think this kind of comes essentially at the request of the Treasury Office currently, uh, city requests four hundred dollar deposit on hand. From four hundred to six hundred. Protects the city in the event that.
Just, yeah, just a little better protection for those that skip the bills. Six hundred is looking out for the city a little better than four hundred in case a bill gets racked up and then they leave, so. I'd like your council to consider that they would.
Uh, and then again, this is just. Through this council, council. Questions on it or that? I have a question. But I was pretty hesitant if you're to be sort of at school or assuming water and all the utilities, waste water. But the mayor said deposit also for. Does that mean like the meters that we also run out or? No, so all utilities, so if somebody has a. Apartment or townhouse or something like that protects the city. So if that person leaves and does not make their bill whole. Okay, we have a little bit more money, set up four hundred, we have six hundred on file. It's a protection for the, for everybody that does pay their bill, so nobody's left short change. So residential. Right?
Yes.
Is that happening more and more? People skipping, is that why we're putting a little bit more?
You're still a little more off in your slight increase.
Okay, that's why I'm asking. Just based on their numbers, they thought six hundred was up. Okay. I'll make a motion to read the title only and hold over for second reading, ordinance number twenty twenty five dash oh nine dash two three. Second. Motion for approval and second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Okay, Scotty Ward.
Yes.
Zach Bryan.
Yes.
Andrew Caris.
Yes.
Bob Clemmons.
Here.
Laura Sarman.
Yes.
Joe Sanders.
Yes.
And Chad.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Page resolution number two zero two five dash zero nine dash two one R. Resolution of right, budgetary transfer fund. General fund.
Uh, just to ask the council permission for this out of serious transfer uh within the quick treasurer's budget, just to cover some. Uh, retirement payoff for P C O and retirement we had this year.
Let's, there are money, just seeking a council approval.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five oh nine twenty one R.
I'll second. Motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Okay, Scotty Ward.
Yes.
Zach Bryan.
Yes.
Andrew Caris.
Yes.
Bob Clemmons.
Yes.
Laura Sarman.
Yes.
Joe Sanders.
Yes.
And Chad Jeffries.
Yes.
Oh, yes, Mayor, thank you.
Number nine, ordinance number two zero two five dash zero nine dash two two. Number nine, ordinance number two zero two five dash zero nine dash two four, from point two thousand point six city budget. In order to cooperate money for the purpose of the train expenses of the departments of the state of January first, two thousand point six. And then move December thirty first, two thousand point six. So just, that's just information. There's been no changes to the budgets since our. A bunch of the holes on. This is just the first read. I'd like to see changes. First read. Just provide all of, I guess, clarification. Last time we discussed it was approximately four percent increase in in about seventy five percent of that four percent increase was. Celebrated. Yeah, so the overall budget is proposed is two point two five percent increase. So very, very minimal. You're right on the. General fund. The other funds collectively are less than one percent increase to be proposed. We talked about, we're going to continue to talk about for not only us, but the public is SB one, there's more and more discussion. This is incredibly conservative next year's budget, but then probably a known to improve that. That's how we approach it for next year. I will move to read title only and hold over for a second reading. Ordinance number two zero two five dash zero nine dash two four. Motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
And a second. Discussion on the motion. Very nine, I'm sorry.
Okay, Ward.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Caris.
Yes.
Clemmons.
Yes.
Sarman.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Jeffries.
Yes.
Oh, yes, sir.
For ten, ordinance number two zero two five dash zero nine dash two five, ordinance for troop salaries for elected officials for the year two thousand twenty six, also the first reading. There's literally no changes from this year's to the opposed zero percent increase for myself, all elected officials. I'll move to read title only and hold over for second reading. Ordinance two zero two five dash zero nine. We have a motion to approve in second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Okay, Ward.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Caris.
Yes.
Clemmons.
Yes.
Sarman.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
And Jeffries.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Ordinance number two zero two five dash zero nine dash two six, ordinance for approve to approve salaries for private officers, employees, deputies, assistants. Departmental and institutional heads as fixed by the mayor and to establish salaries for police and fire rescue departments.
Move to read it. Read in title only and hold over for second reading. Ordinance twenty twenty five oh nine two six.
Second, we have a motion to approve and a second. Further discussion on this motion.
Okay, Scott.
Yes.
Zach Bryan.
Yes.
Andrew Caris.
Yes.
Bob Clemmons.
Yes.
Laura Sarman.
Yes.
Joe Sanders.
Chad Jeffries.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
We're just making it so we do right now. Council feels it's needed. What the workshop was set for Wednesday, September twenty four, six P M. If you're comfortable that that is not needed, we will take that off the calendar and then the next regular meeting Monday, October sixth, back to the. We didn't think so, but it will make the assumption. Some change. Jeff, don't allow it. So then as I said, the next regular meeting Monday, October sixth at seven. Promotion. Second, second, second.
Good night.